I never saw you on the stage when I saw your talk. I was waiting for you.
Are you there?
No?
Is he on?
Yes.
I should have.
Yes.
I'm sure.
That's definitely it.
I'm not sure if he's here.
How many?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm usually there.
He had two quality workers come in.
He didn't get away with it.
I think I wanted to stumble.
You broke my code.
It's about the way you said you were gonna have it.
Yeah.
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 Deal for our.
Yeah.
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 Right now, I was like reading.
Yeah.
I just want to see if you guys.
Yeah.
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 Try to say something.
Yeah.
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 I'd like to call this special meeting in the North Huntington County Board of Commissioners for Thursday, September fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, at seven oh two P M. Local manager, Jeff.
Mr. Harrell here, Mr. Higges here, Mr. Bertani here, Mr. Gray here, Mr. DeSeno here, Commissioner Casserum here, and Commissioner Martino here.
Everybody please rise to the plate of the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anybody who would like to speak tonight, please sign that we'll give the voting. Okay, once is tonight, Mr. William Loesch. Please come to the voting, please. Take your name and address for the record, remember this, being recorded and videoed.
William Loesch, one oh seven eight one, Bellevue Drive, North Huntington, PA. You know, this is my first meeting, I want you to get a general idea of what's going on, you know, whatever. I just read a few things in the paper, but you want to do something for your borough building, four hundred fifty thousand dollars, modernizable, whatever. Do you know what I'm talking about? But the borough building costs three times the one that you.
Yes.
Well, how come four hundred fifty thousand dollars, whatever? All the buildings for just a paint job?
What we do is we come up with an idea of what we would like to do to the townhouse, whether it's outside or inside, and then we bring it back to the board members for a discussion, and the board decides what we're gonna do if anything, so it's up to a discussion.
Okay, now, another thing, for senior citizens, do you have a senior citizen center here? For senior citizens?
Anyone?
You don't?
Yeah.
It's funny, all the other boroughs seem to have, how come you don't have any? There are reasons, there are nothing for seniors.
There was a Y M C A at one time, I believe, and I believe we put, a couple of years ago, I'm not exactly sure, three or four years ago, we had it on the ballot, to put a center in there, and the people in the township voted it down.
Well, what do you think would be more important, putting four hundred fifty thousand to senior is going over a senior citizen center, what do you think would be more important, in your opinion?
Don't know what to say, both.
Both?
Yes.
Because also, my, I have grandson, they play a lot of integral sports, whatever, every time I go to a game, it's three, four, or five dollars, and I say, well, I'm a senior, I get a kind of discount, they said no, so I don't think I spare either. Because I know other people in other boroughs don't give a senior citizen card, we didn't get half price or a discount. You know, since most of the games are being held at, like in the order, Gym Days or Phil's or whatever, I think there should be some kind of discount for seniors also. Do you agree with your mind?
I don't want to tell you. Yes, I'm a senior also.
Okay.
I mean, I get discounts places where I go, but there's a lot of places I don't get discounts, and I don't worry.
No, I'm just saying, I have a hard time, during my fixed income, you know what I'm saying, it would be helpful, you get a discount, but what have you.
But I don't think we, as the board commissioners, anybody can correct me here, have any authority in talking to the school board or something like that to give seniors discounts.
Well, the other boroughs have a card for the member, and they show that card, they get a discount right there. All I do is show that card. Of course, you'll see, you really have anything for seniors, do you? Which I think is a shame in a way. Well, I'm just saying, my opinion, I think, if you're to throw four hundred fifty thousand dollars, you get this place, say, care, I think that's on for seniors. Does everyone agrees with their thought? I don't, I don't either. Anyone agree with me?
I would just recommend, Bruce, can you cover the policy on what we do for meetings? I mean, usually people comment that the commissioners respond afterwards. This is Mr. Loesch's first meeting, so he understands how it works.
Yes, and just, so you're aware, sir, this is a time for public comment, this is an opportunity for you to tell us what's on your mind, which you've done. It's not a time for public debate, where you handle discussion back and forth with the commissioners.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
At the end, when you, when you're finished with all your comments, the president will ask everybody to comment on the various things that you brought up, which could be modernizing the building, the senior citizen, and the senior, and discounts, so I would think, once you're completed your comments, then they'll sit down, and then they'll each have an opportunity to comment.
Okay. You know, one other, like, about the tax, the village, do they raise it in the near future? Do you have any idea what, what you want to do with the village in the near future?
I won't know that until it's appropriate to begin the budget process. We're not ready for that, I think it's been a while since there's been any tax increases.
Okay. But then, the new, the new places have moved in, you know, the corporations, whatever, restaurants and car dealerships, anyone getting a tax break out of this at all? Do you guys see that?
Well, there are only about very few programs ago.
I, I apologize, does anyone get a tax break?
I would recommend that Mr. Loesch give us his entire list of questions that he answered up. So, just ask your question, and then we'll write it down, I apologize, we'll write it down, and then there'll be a response. So, that's another question. I think Tony's writing them all down, or Bruce is. So, we can answer that, and someone here can answer every one of your questions.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, that's about the main three main things. But I, just to say in general, I talk to a lot of my neighbors who are with a senior citizen, and they say it's a shame that they don't have anything to do, or any trips scheduled, or anything for seniors. I'm not, just like doing that comment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any board member have any comments on discussion news?
I guess, I mean, I'll comment a few of the things you talked a little bit about, the tax village and the senior center, as Tony spoke to, like, three or four years ago, we had a idea brought to us about a community center, which would be included at a recreation center for seniors. And we did do a ballot and asked residents if they're interested in, you know, possibly increasing taxes to pay for such a venue, and I think it was about seventy percent of the residents weren't paid there at that time, like, so that was about four or five years ago. And kind of after what you jumped into about the taxes there, I mean, we can get to the exact date, but I think, it's not on the board, we haven't raised taxes, we actually lowered them, so, and I can tell you my, my opinion, like, we spoke to, we're not in the budget process yet, but I don't intend on doing so. Most of the seniors that I speak with in my district speak to the taxes as the most important thing of being on a fixed income. I think that's probably why you saw that a referendum ballot voted no, because they don't want to spend extra taxes, because they aren't on a fixed income, and to build such a center would cost extra in taxes.
What's about anyone getting tax breaks? Is that before, before you should be getting tax breaks in here?
When? When we answer, we'll get to that, okay? We're gonna get down to the list that you gave us, okay?
I just want to follow up on what Zach said about the tax village, I think it was the year two thousand during the budget process, we, some members weren't here at that time, this board, or the members on the, the township commissioners in the year two thousand during the budget process, for the year two thousand and one, raised taxes, one and a half mils. One mil went to the fire departments, that's a pass through, it goes right to the fire departments, to the volunteer fire departments, a half mil was for the capital reserve, finding big projects. Since, that's the only tax increase that I've ever been on this board for, and that's almost nineteen years. So, hopefully you're not confusing us with another taxing body in the school district, I mean, in the community, the school district.
If I found your school district, I'd be confused with it.
And we actually have reduced taxes twice within the last, I forget how many years, within the last recent years, we reduced taxes twice by a half mil each time. So, basically, in the last twenty years, the taxes have only gone up a half mil.
Like, there's nothing wrong with that?
Um, that's not the precedent. Typically, what happens is you have, you already have your say, and then the board responds, and then it's up to him if he wants to allow you to comment further. The, the other thing, there again, I think Mr. Martino said about the school, the sports games, the township doesn't offer any games, it's always, I mean, sports games, it's usually the school district, or one of the other facilities, or organizations within the township, and we don't have any control over that, what they charge, be it the school district, at the gym, or the stadium, or one of the fields, anything like that. So, that's up to the organization if they charge people to get in. As far as being a senior and maybe getting a card, the places that I, I, well, I can't say I take advantage of it, but the places that I see, if you have a driver's license that shows you're over a certain age or some identification, they give you the discount. So, a government issued township card, I don't think would be of much benefit. Again, as Commissioner Higges had said about the sports center, or the senior center, some years ago, we did have a referendum, we would put together a committee and study the idea for, I think it was two years, members of the community, you know, stakeholders, commissioners, various people in the community, and they had proposed about an eighteen million dollar center. We did put it on a ballot for a referendum, and it won, by almost seventy percent of people, sixty-nine with something percent. As far as trips for the seniors, I'm not sure, I think, I know of one time, maybe the recreation board does offer those occasionally, I believe.
They do, they do, they have some bus trips, if one's scheduled through the recreation department. Sometimes not specifically for seniors, but something they do.
Right, and they do all the trips.
Sure.
They do the casino, or wherever. And as far as the building repairs go, again, what Commissioner Martino said earlier, which was, I knew that article in the norm store a while ago, raised a lot of eyebrows, we actually had somebody come to the last meeting and speak about that, and you had the same position you do, it's like, that's way too much money, and you don't need anything. On the other hand, I can tell you that I've approached outside of here, the people say, for the size of the community and the demographics here, the townhouse should look a lot better than it does, because there's some stains on the outside from the paint running, the woods rotting, some appearance items like that. So, the architect that proposed everything, appeared in that article that you probably read, that was kind of a all encompassing project scope that would involve everything that you might want to do to the townhouse. We haven't even discussed, for the most part, really what we want to do, I think the only thing we've agreed on perhaps is that we don't want to put a portico on the front of the building extending out to the veterans memorial, and I think about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that figure in the paper, was for that project. So, I would only say that, you know, you could cut that number in the paper in half already, and then we still have to talk about it, a lot of the other projects, and to see if there's consensus on moving forward with any of them, or each of them. I think we all agree that the townhouse does need some work, appearance wise. So, we'll get into the details of that as we have a discussion, I guess, but that's all I have this time.
Any other measures?
I would just like to also touch on what Rick said about the townhouse, in addition to, you know, upkeep of it, but there's also, gonna be some expenses, bringing up to current codes with as far as accessibility for eighty-eight Americans with disabilities, the townhouse isn't totally up to snuff with that, I believe, John, about accessibility, and I think there's no way for an individual that is challenged to get, to get to the second floor of this building without having to go upstairs. So, there's gonna be some modernization as well, these can count, and unfortunately, that stuff is not all that inexpensive. Those are also some of the things we're looking at as well.
And some of the stuff that Commissioner Bertani's talking about, we're looking into getting grants, because there is grants available for possibly putting some automatic doors and things such as that, in the township forty-eight E A. Just switching topics briefly, the question concerning the tax incentives, there's been no car dealers, or I don't think any restaurants that got any incentives, but we, the township commissioners did provide a tax relief incentive for Moretown Square, it was renovated recently, and also the Express First Building, which is the new office building right by the turnpike. So, those were both given, only by the township, by the school district, and also Westmoreland County, the tax incentive, it controls their real estate tax for a period of five years. So, those are the only two recently, there have been much years ago in North Huntington, but within the last, within recent history, those are the only two that I can recall.
Next, ordinary business work session and discussion conference, Andrew Shepard.
Thank you. First thing we have on the discussion plate is LERT, which is a perfect interlude to what we were just speaking about, which is something we've done for some recent business. We had Michael Hayner here again, he spoke at our meeting last month, and he provided a little bit of guidance on some updates we're considering, how LERT program works, if we recall. And what we had discussed at that point was expanding the program from a standpoint of rather than doing a piece by piece, parcel by parcel method, having an actual program where we have LERT designated parcels in North Huntington, primarily so that we have potential economic development opportunities coming into the township, we can let them know in advance that there's the opportunity for LERT. So, Michael's here again, I'm gonna let him speak a little bit on presentation, and then Mike Turner, he might have a little bit to add, because Mike's been involved in this, and then we'll certainly open up some questions and answers. Michael?
Thank you, and thanks for having me back again. Wanted to provide a quick update on what's transpired since our last discussion, we had Mike on that, the administration of the school district, to review the idea, discuss some of the preliminary schedules that we worked out, that meeting went very well, they seemed, at least from the administration perspective, and the school board president intended the meeting, that they would be open considering, they made some suggestions concerning exemption schedule that fit in line with what Mike wanted to take a look at, and he was, so there was some consistency. With that, we provided two new models in the board packets, one being a model that goes for six years, with two years at one hundred percent exemption, and then decline twenty percent until year seven, and then the second model was five, four years, at one hundred percent exemption. If you wanted to get some feedback on those before we pre-visit the discussion with the school board, we also, you know, wanted to discuss procedures in the forward, we can close out with that, if you have any to add, or.
I think what we'd like to do is just get the board's opinion on exemption schedule, and then we want to go back to the school district's board, full board, and, you know, just move this along administratively. So, whatever the board's comfortable with, we, in talking with them, like Michael said, we looked at the six-year phase schedule, which was, you know, a little more than the five that we thought we'd like to see, and less than a ten, which would be quite, quite expensive. And then the other option is one that they've already, we didn't discuss the five-year one hundred percent, but that's one that they approved, and the two recent ones that we did.
Yeah, again, if you recall from the last meeting, we had thought to discuss the concept of including something in cap, so these analysis are based upon hypothetical project on a vacant site that generates a new assessed value of one point five million, I've seen update that, running either a three or five million dollar project, see what those figures could be for taxing bodies, and we see them authorizing legislation to include in a cap. So, if there were a project that happened to be seven or ten million, they can still only receive that cap up to, percentage value up to that cap, so we can build in some additional protection there, the school board also can percentage of that idea, and that's, we can choose whatever we want, but the one point five million is kind of more realistic for the purposes of what, how the exemption program actually were. And again, that's all based upon new values, incremental values that are generated off the building, the building side, not the land.
Yes, if you're looking for direction for the board uncomfortable, doing what we've done in the past, to a five-year model, I think we're really making clear, and this is the school board, I mean, I think we say before, the county's usually pretty okay with our direction and supportive of us, but I mean, if the school district's more favorable to the six-year that steps down, I mean, I would have no problem with that, but I'm more favorable than probably come through in the past with five.
Five-year, one hundred percent.
That's what we give until the other.
Recent.
I think we need to try and get system for that.
Okay.
Hi. Yeah, that provides feedback for us to go back to the board, did their opinion on, the school board, did their opinion on that five-year model? And then, there goes forward, we can then introduce legislation here at the township hold of a requisite public hearing that discusses the physical characteristics of all the areas that have been mapped out previously, and assuming there are no further comments on the map side, and which areas that the township were targeting, we would then advance forward here, take that to the school board, and finally to the county. We had some deliberative discussions with the county, and their development folks, but we held off until we got a better, you know, schedule, they just wanted to see the final schedule, they don't have much input.
Mike, do you have any other comments on that, just as kind of a recap for the board of what we're, what we're looking to do here? That's the other piece to this program.
We discussed it last month, and had the map up, it's, you know, the method that we used was really to look at parcels that we really thought needed some assistance, and it scaled back from what LERT was eight or ten years ago, because that was a little too complicated.
I think that encompassed every commercial parcel.
Yes.
Or was it the township?
Yes, and that is one way to do it, just all the industrial, commercial property. But, but some of these parcels don't need assistance, we felt like, so we went through, looked at the zoning designation, condition, made the plan, land that needed to be redeveloped and whatnot, and we basically produced what we felt was the right target parcel. Now, yes, different people may have a different opinion on each parcel, but we felt this was a pretty good LERT district, and it's not, it doesn't include things that maybe shouldn't include, it's scaled back a little bit, but I think it gives some assistance to properties that we feel may not develop any time in the near term, and needs assistance, so I can only guess.
Yeah, really, as Mike said, focusing on, especially with the way that Westmoreland County assesses property, you have to focus, practically, a program like this for to be successful, needs to focus on making sites for buildings that will likely be torn down because of their, their past interregional life, because if you do a, and I believe you had this experience with the shopping center, if you're just renovating the building, you're not changing the footprint, it's likely not going to change the assessed value under the assistance the county uses, so in that case, the property owner doesn't receive any incentive, they might do that themselves, but it's, we're not facilitating that by providing incentive, so our target will really those truly blighted properties that we would make it, or, you know, their physical characteristics require some type of further incentive to make a pretty open campus.
Can you leave us a second question? Is there anything in his plans that require that they stay a period after they get this tax break, or are we gonna end up with another holds wagon, or raise our plan?
Yeah, unfortunately, there is nothing in there, I mean, I can look, I've never seen that under LERT, a lot of those, when you see stories of that, a lot of those for the state tax baiting program, which also, usually, not always, but usually does include property tax at the local level, but the state has a program called the Keystone Opportunity Zone, I think that's actually what the former holds wagon plan was, and might still be, actually, but that program was actually, it totally looks actually of all state taxes from corporate perspective, and you often do see people moving after, that's a ten to twenty year program, and you see a lot of people moving. I've rarely seen that just straight on the real estate side, and we're providing an incentive based on the real estate tax, and no other, they're still paying all full tax liability in the state, the federal government, and any other local taxes. I've never, I haven't seen much of that, people maybe in a LERT district, you might see tenants roll over, but you see, you know, in commercial developments like that, you know, the leases are shorter term, you might actually see roll over just during that five year period naturally. So, I don't think it's a major concern, it is something to be watched for, and if there's a way we can, I don't know if any clawback could be built in, but if we can look at, you know, around the state, I think it's been successful doing that, including, I surveyed, I don't think they're getting negative to doing it, it's just, if this program is supposed to focus on just working property, it's blighted back up to a, you know, useful and productive taxes.
They're gonna just leave a new vacant commercial building that someone else can use, more than I can imagine someone doing, unless they had their own personal, like, problems, like interproblems.
Corporate project, like, you'd offer the same for express trips, I mean, the likelihood of them leaving after five, they received a nice benefit to do the project, but it wasn't a massive benefit that then after five years, the benefit was so great to make them choose that site over another site, would the intention that they just leave after the program? Now, if you talk, if you're expecting all state taxes, then people do do that, they'll stay there for ten year period and leave, but with the property taxes, I haven't seen as much of that in my, my experience, but if there is a way, I'll, I'll research that and see if it's been done with LERT, we can report that back. But I think mostly you can see probably multi-tenant buildings, you know, commercial buildings, office suites, those type of things, where, you know, the owners themselves who are receiving the benefit, you know, some property owners choose to pass that on to tenants and use it as an incentive to get tenants, some pocket the whole difference, depending on what they put into a site, or what they put into public infrastructure, and a lot of times, we just won't know exactly what it developed, what it'll do, you know, it's easier to tell if it's an over occupied building, but in the case of some multi-tenant building, you just hardly know.
Yeah, we just went through that with the Walgreens, and I don't know whether there was a tax break there or not.
Oh, no, there's nothing there. So, our steps going forward, we're gonna go back to the school district and discuss the schedule with the full school board, and then we'll have to come back and have a hearing at here, and then we'll create an ordinance with whatever the final product is.
I don't have the map, and also the schedules for the.
Yes.
So, that'll be discovered in the fall, probably November, or even.
Yeah, but we'll have to go back to have more work and discussion with the full school board, then come back here to start the actual rule process.
Anything additional on LERT, board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item we have tonight, another repeat visitor, John Tranq is here. And as the board recalls, John was here in the past, he spoke and asked about our strategic plan, which is the first one for the township. He's getting close to being complete with his report, so he wanted to talk a little bit about where he is in the process, maybe the next steps we need concerning the township plan if the board's in agreement with it.
We've got digital copies, my work copies as well.
I think we said about.
Oh, you don't pay for that?
We're a little bit old fashioned sometimes.
No, that's, that's good, that's good. So everybody has one. Okay, great. So thanks for having me back. We started with this meeting after the last time I was here to talk about moving forward with the draft and plan. And then progressing right into your 2017 budget process. What I'd like to do is walk through this report and the recommendations, pause for any questions or comments that you'd like to discuss. And then ideally, as we talked about the last meeting, ideally, the board will be positioned, possibly your next meeting, to consider taking some action to adopt this as your strategic plan for 2017. So brief background, I know Big Bear a couple of times now, and just wanted to remind you of a few things. First off, Northlankton's got a lot of good things going for it. So this, this process is about helping to move Northlankton even further to the next level. This is not about everything that Northlankton's doing wrong, there's a lot of great things that the township's doing right. So how do we keep those going and build on those past successes? So that's, that was our starting point. And secondly, this is an evolving process. Now, this is written in stone, it's just written on paper. Even if the board were to adopt it as a strategic plan, it doesn't bind you to do anything. It doesn't bind you to spend any money, it doesn't bind you to particular projects. But what it does do is it gets on paper priorities for this board and for the township, so there's clarity in terms of where the township's headed. And so if you're entering the budgeting process, you have a list, I drafted a worksheet for you that I'll hand out here at the end, that has a list of high priorities, medium priorities, low priorities that you can consider folding into the budget for next year. And then next year, you're visiting that list, which you had done previous year, what do you want to add? And then collectively prioritize those, go through that in a thoughtful way. So that as the township grows and demand for services increases, you're going to have more and more spinning plates, like I, as I call it. In the local government, there's always an issue of the day, an issue of the hour, an issue of the week. You know, there's always something burning, and you're spinning those plates, and as the community gets bigger and bigger, and the demand for services grows, it gets more and more challenging to spin those plates. So having this process in place gives you a mechanism to evaluate those opportunities and projects that liberize and consider folding them into a thoughtful process for budgeting and actual implementation. The first few pages, you've seen a couple of times now, I think, and that's background information. So I'm going to gloss over that, you know, why are we doing this plan, I already gave some of that background. Solid foundation, increasing efficiencies, effective use of resources. And that predictability and stability is important both from a management standpoint and from a community attractiveness standpoint. For residents and businesses, the development community likes to know there's stability where they're moving to. And if they know the process and the procedures are going to be solid and predictable, then that's more attractive. Same thing for residents who want to move in. The end game on the top of page two is to institutionalize this process in and of itself. So the individual recommendations are important, but also the fact that you're going through this process is a achievement and a positive thing that should be. I talked about the flexibility, this isn't written in stone. Also introducing some ideas about how to measure your successes in terms of customer service, return, investment, and benchmarking. All good things that on an annual basis are good to revisit in terms of what you've accomplished and what you'd like to do for the next year. And how do you stack out to other communities and measure some of the successes that you've accomplished? We did a suite analysis, I reviewed that with you in terms of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats facing the township. Some of the key observations on page five, and this is just high level. The whole plan, as I think I used the analogy last time, was to look at the tip of a whole bunch of icebergs. This is not a deep dive into any particular department. This was to look across the township functions and say, what are the key one, two, maybe three issues that are priorities? And that should be addressed by the township looking forward into next year. These key observations are just high level observations. You've got strong financial standing, you know that. Planning for that in the future is going to be key. Road program, you've made a lot of good strides there, institutionalizing that and building on that. Your staffing is positive, your public outreach and engagement particularly in recent years with business community, economic development function, is all on an upward positive trend. Our recommendations are broken down into several categories. The second half of page five emphasizes that those are for organizational purposes only. And one of the keys of this report is to certainly not to build silos and help break down silos. So these categories are used for organizational purposes only. Almost all these recommendations cross two or more township functions and departments. So the overarching goal is to really reinforce communication across departments and functions. So we dive right in on page six to administration. One of the key topics here is economic development, as I mentioned to you, I've been stopped here before I get to the end reading. Any questions or thoughts about how we got here and some of the background and why we're doing this? Everybody comfortable with that? Administration, economic development is one of the key focuses for administration. We talked about attractive community with predictable entitlement process, which is like the land development and zoning approval process. So community identity falls under that. You've made good strides in enhancing with new logos and taglines your community identity. Continuing to invest in communicating that consistent identity is important. My shirt, by the way, there, Commissioner Harold. So, you know, any opportunity to get that identity out there is a good thing. And that takes, you know, investment in putting a logo on vehicles or other opportunities to get the identity out in a consistent way. Clear information and a predictable process. That relates to, like I said, moving development projects through the township approval process. It does not have to be the seven hurdles of hell, which it often is in many communities. Yes, it's unenjoyable, yes, if yes, developer, if they, if they catch their breathers, would they just not do it at all? Sure, but if no developers say, yes, sign me up, I want to go through your approval process. But there is a way to try to work with the development community, make the process understandable, make it clearer, easier to follow. And part of that involves, there's a couple of recommendations here. Number one, appoint the assistant township manager position as a single point of contact for initial development inquiries. To make sure that, right now, that role, Mike is still in that role and for the economic development function, he is reaching out in terms of building relationships with the development community and economic development partners. Challenges can arise when the folks that reach in, developers who want to actually develop for the township, get a different voice, get a different answer, or get a different interaction. It's not to say that, for example, Andy's here, and I said this as a big example, that Andy isn't still leading on the development approval process. It's just that there's one single initial point of contact. So when the developer calls and says, hey, what's your permitting process like? Mike's role, Mike's position is there to, at least at the outset, help shepherd that through the process. Because they already know Mike, have talked to Mike, and that's why they're even considering developing in, in Northlankton Township. Because they've heard through all this, this economic development outreach, or taking advantage of Lerdah, other economic development tools that you have on the push out. And now they want to actually develop here, so let's create that consistent single point of contact for the development community. Simplifying the development regulations and processes. You'd be surprised when you take some time and look from the outside in. You know, this may involve getting some feedback from the development community. It may just be dedicating time, staff looking at our process and actually putting it on paper, mapping it out, and mapping each process, billing permit process, land development process, zoning approval. And you realize, it's hard, but when you sort of step out of your own shoes and you're doing it on a day in, day out basis, you realize that it is confusing to take, and it makes no sense to any logical person. Now, we do it, the township folks do, because that's a lot of times there's laws regulating how we approve these types of applications. But there are ways that you can make it simpler, and there are ways that you can communicate about it better to help the development community. So simplifying the development regulations and processes and looking at them and think about how, how you can make them more development friendly without sacrificing the community's goals, and that can be done. Committing economic development as a higher priority at the bottom of page six, onto page seven. That's to say that you've made a lot of good progress with economic development function, primarily that Mike's been working on. And you've got several projects underway, including the Lerdah discussion tonight. That needs to continue to be a priority, because that's how your community's going to grow, that's how your tax base grows, that's how you stay vibrant with development, new development, and redevelopment opportunities. So focusing on that, on that, even as demand for services might grow, making sure there's consistent resources at the township to focus on that. Whether it's a portion of Mike's time or another staff person's time, there's got to be a focus on that if you want that to continue successfully. Still within the economic development function. Communication, marketing, and relationship building. Some of the good stuff you already did from an economic development standpoint needs to continue. The business education and outreach, partnering with local organizations to do education sessions for businesses. Building those relationships will go a long way in terms of attracting and retaining new existing businesses. You've got a township business eletter, e-newsletter, that, that should continue, that's a good way to get the message out very efficiently. You have a whole list of recommendations from the 2014 economic development marketing evaluation, two of which are the ones you just discussed. But that continuing, those is about a couple of years, there's still a lot of good stuff in there, so keep moving forward with implementing that. And again, tying that single point of contact hits on a couple of different cylinders, and you're going to see it throughout in terms of that consistency of message, what it's like to develop in, in Northlankton Township. Development incentives, you're already moving forward with that, it sounds like. Monitor the existing KWD project, and then at the top of page eight, analyze the possible use of local development incentives like TIF and Lerdah. And then publish information about the township's streamlined development process, all those things kind of tie together. You've got some economic development incentives in place, you've got a more streamlined process so that folks know that developing Northlankton Township is not the seven hurdles of hell, you're communicating about what it's like to build and grow in Northlankton. Any questions about administration, economic development? Any thoughts, additions, attractions? Okay, I'm going to grab my water real quick. So we're still in the administration topic area, and we'll move into communications, both internal and external. With internal, we talked last time about this graphic, I think I passed it out separately at the bottom of page eight. In terms of defining and clear lines of communication, both up and down the organizational structure for the township, with township residents being at the top and staff members being at the bottom, and how those different levels interact. That it's important that this allows the township to benefit from the township manager structure that you have, that a lot of communities don't have. That frees the board up to focus more on policy rather than day-to-day operational issues. Not to say that the board can't be, or won't be involved in those issues, but this structure allows more of a policy focus and allows that management, middle level management section to focus more on management while staff is doing action and implementation on a daily basis. So that's important to revisit on an annual basis, particularly if you get new elected officials, or maybe some folks lose focus or just get caught up in the weeds, because there's a particular hot topic that you're focusing on. And every once in a while, at least annually, you just want to zoom out and say, okay, here's our roles and here's how we're all interacting and want to reinforce that. So clear lines of communications under the communications topic for administration. On page nine, I already said this, but reinforce focusing the board commissioners on their role of policymaking. Again, the township has the benefit of the organizational structure that it has with the township manager. So focusing on that role as policymaking rather than implementation at the board level. Complete newly elected officials training, I know you already have a lineup in your budget, and folks typically do that. But again, this is not just about new stuff, this is about making sure that the good stuff you're doing now continues. So newly elected officials should enroll as a training program so that they're aware of how they fit into the overall township function. Reinforce the use of the work order system, there's a good system in place. It can always, everything can be improved, and I think this is a good solid foundation to build on in terms of how those work orders are monitored and how they affect policy correction. So using that system, building on it, monitoring it regularly. As an example, there are some supplier work orders that kind of log down the process. So if there's something that a work order gets in there, but realistically can't be addressed for a year or 18 months, what do you do with it? And it kind of sits there, and those types of things tend to devalue the system, because over time, if you know that they're sitting there, you, you think a little bit less about that list overall. Because you know, oh, well, it says this, but it really doesn't, because we've got six of these that we really can't do for the next 18 months. So coming up with a way is get them off that list, have a separate list somewhere and say, these are major capital improvements, or these can't be addressed during this season because of the temperature or whatever. Get them off the list that you can actually keep an active list of projects that are outstanding and monitor that more aggressively. That was internal communications, external communications, customer service, community engagement. We talked in our last meeting about the importance of, of customer service, upgrading customer interfaces. We talked about the technological aspect, you're going to see that in here a couple of times. But focusing on upgrading those interfaces with customers, both business customers and residential customers. Social media, resident newsletter, online recreation facility rentals, program registration, service requests online, even online billing and land development permits. So there's lots of opportunities to use online techniques and technology to improve that interface. Not the only ways to improve customer interfaces, but there's lots of loving proof there that you can latch on to. Customer service training, we talked last time about how to say no to local government, in fact, we often say no a whole lot more than private sector. That doesn't mean that we can't say no in a positive way, and we can't have all customer interactions be positive. So investing in some customer service training for staff helps to prioritize that and make sure that staff are actively trained. Because, you know, that doesn't come naturally to a lot of people. And to say be nice to customers doesn't cut it. Maybe somebody wants to cut out for it, they don't understand what that means. So actually go through some training where you take your job and you say, hey, here's what I'm doing, and the person can give you some feedback on, okay, when you're doing this task, here's a better approach or a different approach to be more customer friendly. Okay, that's the communications function under administration, any questions or thoughts on that? And ultimately, when we get to the end, this, this sort of, the goal is, this will be the list. This would be what Northlankton Township is going to focus on for next year and into the future. So want to make sure that we go through this, these are the things that are in your mind percolating on these different topics, and we're not missing some high priorities. But as I mentioned earlier, you've got a professional staff that does a great job in terms of day-to-day management of the township. At the bottom of page 10, continuing to invest in the professional growth of professional staff. And top of page 11, again emphasizing the role of township manager and the interaction both with the board commissioners upward and then downward to the department directors and staff. Strategic planning and budgeting, I already talked about this during my introduction. This process in and of itself is a recommendation. So institutionalizing this process, doing it every year, taking the time to focus on it. Taking the time to look at what you're doing well, what you can improve on. And integrating that with the budget process, I have a worksheet here that I'll pass out at the end that'll help bridge from this priority list to the actual budget process. And then adopt a policy for capital investment decision-making. So if at your next meeting, somebody walks in and says, we want to build a wave pole in Northlankton Township, what happens to that? How do you evaluate that? So, you know, come up with a three-step process, we're going to look at the, at the cost, we're going to look at the budget, and we're going to, you know, then make a decision about whether it's even on our hurry list or not. And then if it's not, then you move on and allow us to focus on what hurries are. There's a really, there's not really a waiting pool. Smile at the lady. I stepped on a landmine there.
It's pending, I believe.
Not yet. Not yet, okay. Put the nine C's on it, baby, they're pending waiting pool. Okay, well, at the page 11, upgrading technologies to support all township functions. We had some good discussion last time about conducting a review of all the township's systems to figure out how we can upgrade some technologies. And there's going to be big tech ideas in there, and there's going to be small tech ideas in there. Let's come up with a list and say, okay, what can we do to improve our systems technologically? Implement software and hardware solutions to support mobile solutions. Implement software and hardware solutions to support mobile solutions. We talked last time about the ability of public works, we already have significant mobility and accessibility, public works has some, all departments really could benefit from enhanced ability to access systems from both the water and the field. It's much more efficient, we talked about code enforcement, maybe being able to access the enforcement system, issue citations even from the field or monitor problem properties if we're talking about property maintenance and code enforcement. So building that technology and getting mobile is a key. Okay, we are done, that is all of the administration topic, and before we move into parks recreation, any comments, thoughts, suggestions on that?
Yeah, John, I would say that on administration, I mean, those are the big tech ideas certainly talked about, so I would say that, you know, what you have in there is definitely, you know, definitely what we're looking for, I think is the board, I think we've talked about those before, and I know we had talked about the computer applications at various times, more discussion on various departments, I think you, and you put all that into administration, I think that's fine, that gives us the broad sort of view of the board's agreement that we'll look at some things next year, try to figure out what makes sense for us, so I think, I think those are right on target based on what we talked about before, and I think the direction the board was going in.
Yeah, and to remind everybody, this all came about from me being with the records multiple times, talking on the phone, doing a tour of the township, meeting with you folks a couple of times, it kind of builds all these recommendations. The categories, administration's definitely the heaviest one, but that's really because it affects all departments, and you know, all these affect all departments, there are a lot of departments, as I said earlier. So parks recreation, the key in parks recreation is planning, we've got a lot of good things going now, we've got a lot of recreation programming, we've got a lot of park space. Park space is underutilized for lack of planning, capital investment, recreation programming is kind of maxed out because of available staffing, that's it in a nutshell. So the recommendations here for master planning would be, we talked last time about engaging stakeholders, we need an overall update to your recreation plan, what are the recreation priorities? So again, if somebody comes in with an idea for a wave pool, it'd be nice to say, well, we went through recreation planning process, here are our twenty priorities, and wave pool isn't even on that list, or wave pool is number twenty-one, so we appreciate that, but for now, based on the process that we just went through, the priorities we're focusing on are one, two, and three for this year, and three, four, and five for this for the following year. So two thousand and four was your last one, so it's pretty updated at this point, so we need to update that. And then also, you've got great, great parkland, and it really could benefit from some master planning. We talked last time about some grants, about grant opportunities. My recommendation will be is that if you're able to budget for the planning and have the township fund the planning part, it's much, much more efficient to get the grant money for construction. The planning grant money's come with so many hoops and requirements, sometimes it's just better to just do it yourself and then move into construction. You can't get construction grants without the plan in place, so moving forward with that is a good thing on your own if you can't. So master plans for each park, and then as a result of that, top of page thirteen, excellent you have a recreation fee in lieu of land dedication, that fee's pretty outdated though, when you update your recreational plan and master plans, that'll give you a list of capital investments you need to make. That list of capital projects can then justify or allow for a tweaking of recreation fee amount. You can't really just do that willy-nilly, ideally, you have a capital plan in place and your recreation plan will get that done for you. Recreation programming, you are doing a great job using contractors now to provide pretty much all of your recreation programming, and what's happening is that's maxed out, I think, because it still takes effort to manage the registrations, to manage the coordination, to manage the contractors, so a lot of good things have happened there, and I think if there's a desire to grow as the level of service demands grow, you're going to need some additional capacity there to help coordinate that. Additionally, the space that you have to do those programs is pretty limited. I know earlier tonight, it seemed like every time I've been here, that the big project from several years ago has come up, and I didn't mention that on purpose because I think there are some interim steps that we're constantly looking at, more collaboration with local organizations, the school district, et cetera, and I don't want to just jump too back into that regional discussion. Northlandton Township can find some more opportunities, I think, its own parks and facilities, its own local organizations to do some innovative things and find more programming space. But you're going to need some more capacity, so I think you, if you doubled your program space tomorrow, to try and double the amount of programs you have with the structure you have now, it's just not going to work. You're going to have unhappy customers, you're going to have lack of organization, and it's starting to, the quality will start to decrease. Staffing management and organizational structure for parks and recreation, updating the policies and procedures to allow some more flexibility with how staff are allocated, and paying closer attention to when the service demands are and how that relates to staff availability. So do you have overflowing trash on a Sunday morning because the parks were slammed on Saturday with picknicks, but we can't call off certain parks facilities because they're not available to empty trash cans? So just taking a look at that in terms of the availability of staffing as it relates to service demand, and that relates to the last one for parks recreation, the top of page fourteen, which talks about the capacity for maintenance staff management, and none of these are standalone, in other words, I talked about increasing capacity for program management, these could be the same person, or these could be parts of the same person, these are not mutually exclusive recommendations. The point is, you need some capacity to manage the day-to-day, right now you're maxed out, and the ability to do long-range planning, grant applications, park master planning, capital program management is severely limited for parks and recreation because of the focus on the day-to-day staff management and day-to-day management of recreation program contractors. So if the goal is to continue to build on the good thing you have going here, you're going to need some additional capacity to fill these functions. Any questions, comments on parks and recreation? All right, we're going to go right on into planning and zoning. So planning and zoning, broken down into three main priorities here on page fourteen. Number one, internal communications, I talked earlier about the single point of contact, so making sure that there is constant and clear communication between the actual permitting process and the economic development function is critical. Again, it's happening now, but it needs to continue, it needs to be taken to the next level, so that as you get more aggressive with economic development, there will be opportunity for more disconnect between town development, Northlandton Township, which is a great place to develop, and the actual approval process. So trying to work hard now, before it gets harder and harder, bringing those two paths back together, work hard now to make sure they're fully integrated is a key priority. Developing departmental goals and priorities for planning and zoning, right now there are a lot of functions that are housed under one roof in planning and zoning, it's a bit of a beauty by what the priorities are and how the staffing capacity lines up with that. So I take a deeper dive, and John mentioned at a meeting or two ago that really each department certainly could use a deeper dive at some point, I think the priority here is that planning and zoning, because of the breadth of topics that they take on, could use a deeper dive in terms of setting priorities for the department and aligning staff, which who's doing what for that department, to make sure that it's being done in the most efficient way. Planning and regulations, the bottom fourteen, updating the township's comprehensive plan and land development regulations. This strategic plan is very focused on organizational structures, township, and to be done on an annual basis, but the overall comprehensive plan for the community needs to be redone as well as the zoning ordinance and subdivision and development ordinance, and updating those will allow for a fresh look at how you regulate land development, zoning, and land use in the township. Last one for planning, at the top of page fifteen, is code enforcement. We talked last time, I'll do a bit about code enforcement, this is a discussion we had last time about focusing more on being reactive, that's not a negative, there is, everybody has to do reactive complaint-driven code enforcement, and has a choice to do proactive code enforcement. So taking one step first before you take the second one is the key, so making sure that the reactive code enforcement is strong, focusing on that, focusing resources on that, and then considering moving into being more proactive, it will be a priority. And that has to do with staffing availability, and right now focusing on complaint-driven, reactive is the key, and then if a decision is made to go towards more proactive, you evaluate what staffing and resources are needed to do that. Any questions on planning or planning development? Either I have a nail on the head or everybody...
John, just on your...
It's kind of like football, huh? Ah, now I get it, uh-huh.
On your code enforcement piece, I think it was a really good, it's one of those topics that really is concrete, that, you know, everybody can grasp, including me, and I think you hit the nail on the head, because it really is, you know, we're in a product as well, and I think different, reasonable-minded people have different opinions on what's good, what's not right or wrong, there's no right or wrong answer here, and I think that based on what you've presented, what you've leaned for talking to different people, commissioners, that that's where we are at this point. So like you said, at some point, maybe we want to move to another phase, maybe it's two, three, five years from now, there's some of these same commissioners, maybe there's new commissioners that say we want to be more proactive, and we want to be patrolling streets and not just answering calls, and at that point, you make a decision on do you want to increase your staff level, what's the cost associated with that, so these are the sorts of discussions that are really important, I think, for our board, especially with some new members, just to get a feel for everybody.
Yeah, there's some real concrete benefits and challenges with being proactive. When you try and be proactive but don't do it consistently, you're opening yourself up for a whole can of worms. But if you're being reactive and complaint-driven, and I wish there was a better word than reactive, but it sounds negative, but it's not, as long as you're actively responding to complaints and reacting to complaints brought for the township, as long as you consistently manage them, you're okay. But when you're out there patrolling and you're picking on Job but not Jim, that's where you get challenges. You can do proactive successfully, you can set up programs and you have regular controls and regular reviews, but that's the way you down the road on that.
That's definitely a costly item, so...
Yeah, I think you catch it just pretty well, based on what I think the board's looking to do, at least at this point. Okay. All right, we're going to move into police and then public works and emergency management. So police, community engagement, the chief at our last meeting talked about, he's already moving forward with trying to get some of these programs back, the citizens academy program, with the junior academy program, so continuing to allocate resources to getting those programs back, because we talked last time, there's all kinds of benefits with that. Upgrading the community awareness and outreach in terms of, you use Nixle now for emergency alerts, are there other opportunities, whether it be Facebook or Twitter or what have you, in terms of getting information out there, because you can't have an officer around every corner, so how do you get all the safety information out there quickly and efficiently? And looking at other ways to do that outreach. That also includes, you know, your department does a great job already partnering with the school district and other organizations to do educational sessions, so making sure that they continue to be a priority, that's an investment, that's the time investment that's associated with that, so making sure that that stays part of the budgeting process is important. Public works, any questions on police? Public works, public page sixteen. Rural road program improvements have been folded in in recent years to your road program, that's important given the lane miles, you've got a lot on the road in Northlandton Township, so, and a lot of them are rural, so you've got some innovative things in terms of how you're managing, beginning to manage maintenance of those rural roads, so making sure that stays a component of your overall paving program is important. The overall commitment in entirety to the long-term paving program is critical, and relying on the engineering reviews and analysis that you will do on, have on, on a regular basis to inform that, so that you have a level spending amount that's commensurate with maintaining your roads at a certain level of service. As you can see on the charts, bottom page sixteen, over to top of seventeen, the number of improved road miles is increasing, as well as the amount spent annually is increasing, and what this recommendation talks about in middle of page sixteen is to do two things simultaneously. Commit to the annual road program that's based on any level of service and engineering data from analysis of existing roads, and then also being aware of how that affects the overall financial wherewithal of the township. So that there needs to be discussion annually about, if you want to maintain a road program so that every road's getting paved, that the non-rural roads are getting paved every eighteen, twenty years, that requires us maintaining a level of service, whatever it is, on every road, and to do that, we need to spend one point two million dollars a year, one point five million dollars a year, whatever the number is, and that continually to monitor that will likely have that continued level of amount of significant investment, then also start to get handle on getting these roads paved on a consistent basis. So sticking with that, you've done a good job in the last couple, three years, come up with that program and develop that program, and maybe you continue to invest in that program, and that really needs to continue. And then the next question is, every year, ask yourself, how does that one point five affect our overall budget? And make some tough decisions about, we want to make sure that we do not violate our unbalanced policy, we want to make sure that we still have consistent funding available for year-round day funds, capital funds, so that that road fund should maintain its own autonomy. In other words, it can't continue to be a significant investment at the expense of the overall financial cost for the township, and asking yourself that question every year is important. Communications for public works. Reinforce the use of the work order system, making it a little more user-friendly, making it a little more accessible to staff, both in the field and in the office, and updating the current mobile technologies, as I mentioned earlier, for multiple departments. And then a late addition is based on a comment from the commissioners at our last meeting, I had this special with your emergency management coordinator. Two high priority things came out of that, number one was, consider additional resources for additional support to that emergency management function. It is an intensive task, right now it's filled by one volunteer person, so are there ways to allocate some additional administrative resources to help support that task, whether it be filling out paperwork or filing paperwork or time to the grant or so on and so forth. The other would be, you're already doing good communication with township departments and functions, making sure that that's a priority for all departments, all directors that they interact with, emergency manager and coordinator on a regular basis, so that they have updated information and plans. Okay, that was a whirlwind tour through all the priorities for each department, any questions or comments before we pass up this checklist? Anything we missed from our last discussion that I might miss?
If you have a question.
Trace, how much you're worried? Will you move in and work on it? Absolutely, yeah. And as a player, the fact that you're even going through this process is impressive. Any other questions upon this? So this is a list of the recommendations in summary form, and our goal was, our goal is, is it's working successfully, is to bridge this into your budgeting process. So these are the recommendations we just reviewed in the ready-to-report in summary form by topic. It's like a worksheet, there's a priority for column, or a column for priority, and there's a column for costs, and the goal would be that as you go through your first twenty seventeen budget, you've got the full report in hand, but also have this cheat sheet, and we start saying, okay, what are our priorities for twenty seventeen that are going to actually have an impact on the budget and make it into the budget? Because for example, some of that planning we talked about for parks and recreation, that's a critical priority, I think you've got an excellent resource there, it's the definite community amenity and tracts and retains, both residents and businesses, and you've got a good park system, that's going to be an investment on the planning side for the overall parks and recreation plans, and master plans you're talking, you know, thirty to fifty thousand dollars depending on details you want to get, how engaged you want to be with the residents. So identifying those costs, start with the prioritizing and pick out the ones that make it into your twenty seventeen budget, we can use this worksheet to do that. So identifying those costs, start with the prioritizing and pick out the ones that make the end of your twenty seventeen budget, could we use this worksheet to do that?
And that's good, John, because I think what you're saying is obviously, you know, the, the, the plan has been prepared. All those items aren't going to be addressed in twenty seventeen, so. This cheat sheet is really good because it gives us collectively an idea of what we really wanted to tackle next year and what costs are associated with those things. So, I like it. It's really, it's really helpful.
And I think it can evolve too. You could use track what you accomplished in seventeen, so when you're thinking about eighteen, you know what you did and you add to this list the new things.
I think it's good.
So ideally, you guys will be positioned at a future meeting to say that, that this is it. So is there anything that we missed, that we missed or missed on the mark? Questions? You want some more detail on a particular topic, a recommendation, or do you feel like we, we've hit the nail on the head here?
John, should, should we, should we go through this over the next few weeks or next month? Prioritizing or picking at least a few of the top priorities and, um, and, and then adopt? We should adopt this, or what is your suggestion for, uh, the, the procedure, methodically, should we do?
My recommendation would be at your next meeting to adopt this, that plan itself, not the cheat sheet. And say this is a twenty seventeen strategic plan for more than township. And then that will set in motion going through and using this checklist for your budget process. It's not, as I said when we started, it's not going to bind you anything by adopting this. But I think it at least gives a full board collectively an opportunity to chime in and make sure it represents what you're thinking about priority-wise and take action on it.
I think, but I think from a budgetary standpoint, what I would do, you know, it's not usually to try to compare the, the budget or of course gets involved. And if I try to give them an initial, initial, um, document to look at, something to work from, I will certainly pick items off this list and hopefully I picked the ones that the board would be the most interested in. And I think just based on some of our discussions, I'm going to have an idea of what some of those items are. And I would include those in the, um, the twenty seventeen proposed budget. And if I hit the mark, right, if I didn't, they'll let me know that there's a few things that we missed and we can incorporate those. So that's, that's how I would, you know, move forward from a budgeting standpoint.
Okay.
John, actually, uh, what I thought this, this is a bunch of bullet points, basically, from the plan.
Yeah.
What I'd like to have seen, and we can go to your father, uh, is to actually survey us, the commissioners, as to what their priorities are.
Okay.
And then create a direction from there.
I think the priorities are in the, in the plan, it's just a matter of which one you tackle first.
Right. These are all, I mean, we didn't do a deep dive on all these topics. So these are all what we feel as the, the high priorities for these topic areas, but they're not all going to make it in twenty seventeen.
I agree.
So, yeah, how you want to go about picking the ones that do is, is up for discussion. I can give you my thoughts on that, or I can facilitate a discussion amongst the board to do that. Um, I'm, I'm open to how you might proceed.
I mean, I would recommend for the board's consideration, if this plan's adopted, and it sounds like it might be, because it sounds like there's general consensus on the overall, on the overall plan. Um, like I said, I would move forward and take these items and include the ones I think are the most pressing and, and doable for twenty seventeen. Some of these things may not even be doable for seventeen. They may be truly longer-range items, and I would include those in the, in the budget. And again, if I'm hitting the mark, you're going to let me know. If not, you're going to probably let me know that, well, it's critical. And that's why we're going to have our budget meetings, is to actually go through that process and see what you like and don't like. But I think I have an idea just based on what we've talked about and some of the things. I mean, some of these items were discussed even prior to John starting his work. Um, for instance, Commissioner Rattany brought up some months ago doing some more planning with the parks. Um, I think multiple commissioners were interested in doing that. So to me, that would be something that would be easily included, just based on what I already know, so, um... You know, I'll talk a little bit like John said, you can just, everyone can fill a sheet out and kind of collate the, the, the answers and try to figure out what the priorities are. You guys can sit amongst yourselves and just say what you want included. But, but I would recommend, um, giving me a shot at it. Yeah, I would recommend at least giving a shot, putting it together for you to take a, take a look at. We've done that in the past. I think it's been somewhat successful.
I, I agree with that, John. I, I think you take, take a shot at it and bring it back to us and then we can adjust it as, as needed. And if, if I can just add, add this, being this, the first I've had the opportunity to see this, that being away the last couple of months, is... I, I, I'm familiar with, with, um, long range short range planning, you know, I've done it a past couple of few times. Um, there, there's a lot in here to accomplish over course of one year, and that's what I'm saying, it's, it's the safety obvious. So I, I'm kind of looking at this as, which is great work, by the way, um, as, as a long-range plan for the township. And from this, we need to narrow it down to a short-range plan that can be accomplished in two thousand, you know, what is the short-range plan for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty-one? To accomplish this long-range plan is the way, the way I think we need to approach this.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Very good, John. Thanks.
John, I have a question. Your opinion, do you think we need to look at having a full-time emergency management director? Being inside our township or?
I think.
Just a question.
Yes.
If you're going to need it.
I think.
It's easy for you to say, I think.
No, I, I, I think that I know that that function is critical. I know that it is high-intensive. I know that most places fill that function through volunteer, uh, or some portions of other staff positions at, at the municipality. Um, I would fault you if you did have a, a staff person to manage it.
Just get your input.
I don't think that it's a priority that tomorrow you hire somebody to do that.
We're probably looking at someone that has a full-time emergency management coordinator, a relatively large group.
Right.
Maybe Pittsburgh, Philadelphia. I would even think the largest other municipalities that allocate a counter like Penn Hills is, I can't imagine having a lot. Like you said, it's probably put in maybe one of the fire chiefs, someplace that paid fire chiefs, very nice combination to put that together.
Okay, I'll issue the final report and get that everybody.
Sounds great. With the, with the board's agreement, we can put it on the agenda for next week, consider adoption, is that's unreasonable? Or do you have to wait a little bit longer, that's, you know, okay, move forward with it. We'll include it for next week's agenda for adoption as presented by John. The only piece you'll probably add is the very end, the emergency management piece is the only, what you brought in, gives the two items tonight.
They're on the, the summary, but I'll give you the new report that has about the end.
That sounds great.
All right.
Thank you, John.
We'll see you.
Yes, we're, we're done with this topic. I don't know what Daryl says, and that's maybe why I question like, kind of formally adopt this. I love this kind of like a working document that they talk about constantly, like every year, and it gets updated. We formally adopt this, I, I imagine, or, you know, publish it and whatnot. And I'm sure if some of these bullet point items are hit, I might be, be asked why.
Right.
Which, which I'm completely fine with, but, um, I, I don't know. Maybe round it over my head about formally adopting this as a, you know, this year, next year, move forward.
I think the important thing is, is the township's strategic plan. It's our strategic plan for twenty seventeen.
Okay.
So I, I, it's, it's. It's a great point, because as Daryl said, and I agree, this, this is a list that, you know, we're not going to accomplish. So let's, let's pull some things out every year. And to be honest, next year, there may be two things that are off that list and three more added. And either, we need to look at this thing, it's not going to be the same, it, for whatever reason, the priorities might change.
Absolutely. It's a working document that doesn't, it's not a year, then it's kind of a working document that's ever-changing.
I think, we thought there's a long-range plan, and you know, it, it needs to be relooked every year. Because priorities change, situations change, you know, and, and that's where, every, every year we sit down and build a long-range training plan for, for our local areas. Based on what we know today now and what the future looks like. But we all know it changes day to day, month to month, year to year. So every year it needs to be looked like, relooked at, and if it needs to be adjusted, it gets adjusted. And you develop your short-range training plan from your current long-range. So it, it may be some.
Just like us, it's got to be a living, breathing document that, that changes and constitutes.
Yeah, most of these bullet points have no cost value to them, or a lot of them do. I think it's a, it's a cycle. A plan is a plan, that's what you get, changes every year. I think the bullet points will change every year.
Next item we have on the agenda tonight, we talked briefly earlier about was townhouse renovations. And, um, again, um, I'm looking for some direction. Again, we don't have to make a decision again tonight, but I would like to include potentially some things in seventeen if the board's comfortable doing that. If not, you know, it's, it's, it's not going to be the end of the world for us. But I will say this, um, as Commissioner Grace said earlier tonight, and one thing I do believe that Commissioners agree on was not moving forward with the board. Because we can certainly put that, that project off to the side, well, probably put it off to the side, we can pretty much put an exit over it. But the other project that I believe the board was in agreement with, considering, was, um, the ADA renovation component for grant funding. The piece that we have for that will be the bathrooms on the, the main floor, and the planning department, the second floor, the lift, and also potentially the renovations to the, um, the front door, that would provide us like a pushback capability. We will bring back to you next week for the agenda, that as a CDVG application. We'll have that for you, and also the sanitary sewer lateral replacement program, which we've been doing for many years. And the board will have to look at those two projects and prioritize them. So we're going to move forward with that. For those, for that piece of the, for that ADA compliance piece with the CDVG, Andy, I'm going to say we'll get notice on an award maybe February, March of next year. So we won't know about that, the budget, for a budgetary standpoint. So if you want to, you know, consider this for grant funding, and if we don't get it considered for a future year, you can do that. But we won't know for the, you know, for this budget cycle whether or not we'll have that funding in place. Maybe we will, maybe we won't. So just keep that in mind, so you may want to consider some other projects outside of those improvements that are interested in moving forward. Um, and I guess I should have a better process for you, but all I have is a list of projects. And I don't, you know, I notice I think there's different board members that have some different ideas on, you know, more extensive repairs versus less extensive internal, external. So I don't know how you want to move forward with this, if anybody's really given it much thought. Maybe he has an idea of where they'd like to start on, you know, making renovations, if, if at all. But I think, I think probably most people would agree, there's a handful of things, like the steps outside of my office. You can see we have a temporary railing, you know, connected there just to hold up, hold the railing on. There's quite some things that probably most board members would say, yeah, we need to do these, we need to avoid it, so. I'll open it for, uh, for discussion, or if anybody has this recommendation on how to move forward with this.
Um, I guess I'll give a recommendation. Uh, a lot of the stuff, I think, um, we kind of all spoke to, the outside appearance of the building. There's not really one on here that I, I would say that, you know, maybe doesn't need addressed and.
So is that, you're on like exterior renovation sheet, as Daryl said? Everybody wants to look at that sheet with exterior renovations.
And, um, you know, I'll, I'll be okay, you know, even trying to allocate, you know, possibly all that money, you know, for next year. Maybe like a, you know, phase, kind of like we're talking about, you know, planning strategically again, and you know, if you want to come back next year. And obviously, as you said, you're going to apply for the grants for the bathroom and possibly the lift. But, um, I'm going to take a look at the interior project, maybe, you know, scope-wise, kind of following in like here.
This would get us, um, this would get us most of the things on the exterior. Or one item I will say, and I apologize if I don't have any good number for you, is the parking lot. Because I know that's going to be, um, it's going to be more than what, than what Ron gave up prepared for us. Because he didn't have, I think, the rest of the APs figured in there. Bob Robinson's going to come back and give us a number for that. So I will give you a, an updated parking lot number. But I'm going to tell you it's going to be a little bit more than what's in there. I don't know, it's not, he's doing core boards to make sure he gets the right treatment. Um, but the parking lot's probably one of the things that, I don't want to speak in words, most people right think we need to probably do something with that. Um, so I'll say that that number's going to be a little bit higher.
Yeah, or even if we just, you know, take that piece out, where if we feel that's, you know, one of the higher priorities, make that, you know, maybe part of the second phase and put that with the interior renovations for next year.
Yeah, because when we do the parking lot, um, unless I'm thinking wrong about it, it's really one I took out of Ron Gaynor's hands, and I figured Bob Robinson's probably a better person to handle for us because it's just, that's right down his alley. So I thought, and of course Ron didn't mind, so that's, that's fine, we don't get involved in that sort of work that much. So maybe that's one we could, you know, you can push into the following year.
If we're doing some curb replacement and, you know, sidewalk and steps, we might do some damage doing that work. So give us a little leeway and replace any type of pavement we tear up.
Well, I think, Zach, you're saying do everything on that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with, you know, posing, you know, basically, that, uh, kind of like we mentioned with your, I wouldn't say recommendation, but advice maybe, pull the parking lot piece out and move forward with the rest of the exterior renovations. Um, you know, as maybe a phase one part of renovation of the townhouse. And, uh, look for more big interior, um, plans along with the parking lot for maybe, you know, phase two. Um, like you mentioned, uh, obviously we are going to apply for the grants for the, um, you know, restrooms and the lift. And that we require, I guess, maybe the phase one as well.
We, we, we would at least know by next year, if we break into the phases, whether or not we're going to get that grant money. And if we don't, you guys can make a decision whether or not you think these improvements make sense or not. Maybe they don't if, um, if we don't get the grant money. If they, if we get the grant money, then, then we'll, then we'll deal with it. And, um, and for the expenditure standpoint, we would give an award for these pieces. Is it next year, or is it rolling, you think, into the next year? It's going to, there's cycles, it's necessarily the same as our, as our year.
It can be spent next year, but I believe you have until June of two thousand eighteen to complete.
So if we go on the board, we could probably roll this into our eighteen budget?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be perfect from what we're thinking about. That probably is a nice idea just to, um, from a budgetary standpoint, then we'll know when the grants, you could write this for the two, for the two pieces.
I'm agreeing with that. I think we do everything on the exterior, but we'll, we'll just park it out for now.
First.
We were saying, they say do it, do the parking lot potentially in, in eighteen rather than seventeen.
Better eighteen than seventeen.
And we'll have a number for that, you guys can think about it. And actually, if you look at some of the interior renovations, it would really balance you out much more on the budget. But the interior's certainly a lot less money, and some of those things you might not want to do anyway on the inside, which is fine.
So what is the repair cap retaining wall?
That is the wall that runs along the police station. It, like, runs through the side steps, and it's that, yeah, it's the up, the, the, the top of that, which is the interior rating pretty significantly. So he, he just has a number to repair that in some fashion.
Because actually sixteen items on this sheet. From what I see, I, I think I would go with items one through nine and thirteen through sixteen. And that would be then pulling out the paving, repairing the lot.
Okay.
Concrete curbs.
Right.
Replace the parking lot light fixtures.
You're saying don't, you're saying take.
Take those three out.
The fixtures, okay.
Right.
And so you know the fixtures, and I, your, your, whatever you folks want to do, is find the fixtures are just the, um, the tops. Not, like, not the standards, the poles are going to stay. You just said we could get a, like, a more efficient fixture. So the poles themselves would stay, and they'd stay the same spot, be the same height. He just thought a fixture would help us with better lighting and maybe a little bit of efficiency, but you could, you could do that.
Yeah.
I actually talked to him about doing some other lighting standards, and he said that's just too much money. He said that's too much to move them around and just do, use, use what you have. So, you know, a lot of the newer facilities have a lot, you know, like, the lighting standards aren't as tall, there's more of them.
Yeah, I think they'd be talking about replacing the fixture with some kind of LED lighting, something that would be brighter, a little more cost-effective.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think it would make sense to go on the curb if you're going to knock into the lot.
Right.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, that'd be together.
And I was thinking on the light, light light fixtures, that maybe they were going to be digging up a lot, putting cord through it or pull wires. That's why I pulled that out, so we would do, uh.
Absolutely, absolutely, it is.
The conjunction would be made for that, but you're just talking about, talking about fixtures and that's kind of your role. So I'd be, I'd, I'd be okay with putting that in.
And the other one that, it is cosmetic, and it's, you know, it's, is the keystones above the windows. That's the one right below, the last one you had discussed, which is sixty-four hundred dollars. It was, the goal was to make it, give it back to the original design of the building. Some of the things are just probably cut out and costly. So that's one that is, is purely cosmetic. It's not functional, it's just, you know, trying to give us, give it some of that look that unfortunately some of those things went away whenever the building was built. But according to Ron Gaynor, that's common.
Right. But if we're cleaning the brick and replacing the shutters and doing everything else, then I would have to throw that in.
It's not a lot of money, it's no money. Just, I wanted to make it clear, that was a cosmetic, we moved the, the initial picture that was for the, for the townhouse design.
Well, right now, like I say, the complaints I'm getting, other than a couple that came in complaining about the cost of the renovation. All right, like I say, the complaints I'm getting other than a couple that came in complaining about the cost of the renovations. I mean, I've heard a lot about the appearance of the building, so I think that would help the appearance.
Doing all this work would make the building on the outside, I think, look very attractive.
Right, and then we could do the lot on the curbs later.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly going to make it one more year.
Right.
It's, it's not in great shape, it'll make it.
I guess that makes sense to the curb. Or do you pose a concrete curving period or just, okay, just do it all together with them?
Yeah, we're obviously going to do that all at once.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. So if you guys like this scope, now, well, what I'll do is I'll include this in the budget for twenty-seventeen. We'll have some more discussion, but also probably give Ron Gidler the go ahead and start designing this. Because the goal would be to put it together and then, you know, at some point next year, be building this. He has a lot of work on, you know, bids back and things of that nature.
We're not going to be able to do a lot of this work till April or May.
Right, he has a lot of work before that, you know, the bid spec. He has a lot of work to do on designing all the bids backs, putting things out. And it's, you know, that's months and months and months of work. If we'd be in good shape, we'd have it ready by then.
My concern on the interior would be, I think, I'll bet with this. My concern on the interior is why not get that lift in and get it done in January?
Well, I only think that we're not going to know about the, we're not going to know about the funding piece. And I don't believe we're going to retroactively fund it. I don't think we could put it in and then apply for the grant money. That's not going to happen. But that's part of the application that Andy's folks have put together. It includes that, both bathrooms and some money for retrofitting the front door for a pushback. General, we're on that, Zach?
Yeah.
Okay, that's where we're going to go with them.
I guess we didn't really mention the landscaping part too, but I think maybe that'd be, after we talk about the interior, maybe next year we'll talk about landscaping.
Well, and since we're not doing the parking lot, it's a lot critical. Because if we do the parking lot, we do something with that landscaping, it's been that long, we don't want to talk about that. But if we at least have, we can at least put it on for a year. So that's excellent. Thank you. Gives me some further direction on that. Last item I have tonight is the update to the Civil Service Commission rules and regulations. I've given everybody a copy of those. And there's only, I've given you the entire book again, but there's only one change from what was proposed from the Civil Service Commission initially. And that's related to the physical agility exam. The meeting we had a few months ago, the board, I think the direction was to have the Civil Service Commission look at again, giving specific tests rather than leaving it open to the commission to make that decision on a test by test basis. So what they've done, I got with the Civil Service Commission, Commissioner Bertini was at that meeting. And they did take our advisement, what the commissioners had requested. And they did alter the rules and include again the physical agility test component. It is slightly different from our existing rules, only based on what Bill Bem was recommending as an update of what they actually do, the police academy. It's just some wording, but from a testing standpoint, it's the same things. I believe that's what the board commissioners was looking for to move forward with this updated rules and regulations. So hopefully that makes sense. I'm not sure if there's any questions on the revision that the Civil Service Commission made. And ultimately, if the board commissioners is in agreement with the rules, what we would need to do is advertise these as an ordinance and we can consider a formal adoption in October. Then civil service can be off and running on when they test it and they want to do for, hopefully just get a list together for entry level. Questions on what they've done?
Yes, I said in the last meeting, I mean, I was kind of there with going Phil's direction of just, you know, saying, you know, carrying out, you know, physical agility test would be stated, you know, in terms of, you know, broadcasting, you know, hiring base. But, you know, if this gets a pass, I'm comfortable with that. And especially if he says either kind of the current update standards being used at current police academy, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I believe he, his opinion is whenever, if you're going to use this type of test, this is what, this is what you need to use versus some other test that he had talked about that night, which is, which is probably much different than what, than what's currently being done. So.
I have a question. I was wondering, just hanging about this anyway. On the second page here, CDE underneath, in the event that any of the agility requirements are unavailable and were not operational, then the chief of police shall make preparation on alternative substitute tests. As similar assesses components of the agility test that is unavailable. What under this agility test could be unavailable?
I mean, I think it's unlikely, but I think there is, the commission talked about that. I think in theory, I guess in theory, in theory, could the window climb not be working? I guess, but they wanted to have some flexibility in the event that one of these tests wasn't available for whatever reason. They wouldn't assign me that they could say, we can't test. The rules say we have to do this. So I think they wanted that opportunity in the event something would happen and it wasn't, it wasn't available from a testing standpoint. But to do that, of course, they would have to vote on it. From a practical standpoint, I agree, it's unlikely they're going to need to do that. Is it possible? And, you know, yeah, anything's possible, but I think from a practical standpoint, they're not going to need to do that.
John, I think also what they mean by unavailable is if it's been challenged, you know, like, you know, Phil Gaiman, the experts said about.
And he should be challenged versus unavailable. Because if the wind, what could be the window is unavailable as the road, well, then it's making it up. The core model one, thirty second trigger pull. What are you trying to expect your care?
I agree.
So you help me out.
I mean, I agree. I think they wanted a little bit of flexibility in that something would not be available. But again, I think from a practical standpoint, I think from a practical standpoint, they're not going to need this. It's not going to be used, but it's in there. So I'll say this, if you, if you want to, if you want to, if you have a concern with that and you want the Civil Service Commission to look at it again, what's going to happen is they're going to schedule an additional meeting and they're going to again reconsider your concern. And then we'll just, you know, we'll just go through this process again. Because ultimately, what you need to do is, you know, you either adopt something they've recommended or you don't. And if you don't, that's fine, because like we did last time, we took it back to them. I have no problem doing that. It's just a matter of scheduling a meeting with the Civil Service and having them come out and say, look, the board commissioners have a concern with this, with this paragraph. But I just want you to know that's what we're, that's what we need to do.
I don't have a problem. I mean, I request that agility test be in. When you put something in there that's unavailable, it makes me question why would you put that in? That's all I'm saying.
I agree.
If it's not available or not operational, it is.
Well, you can get the test if it's not available.
Well, if it's available.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not available, then you don't expect the test.
Yeah, I mean. It's all kind of simple.
And I understand what you're saying. I think from a practical standpoint, it's not going to be used. I think practically, but they, there was a meeting, they just had a discussion and I think got hung up on that a little bit. If what if something's not available or we can't do it, what are we going to do? How could we do, if the county commissioners tell us to do all these things, and one of these things for whatever reason isn't available, how are we going to run the test? The test isn't going to be valid. So again, I think from a practical standpoint, this isn't going to come into play.
If they got, just to give you what it said, they got hung up on when they did it. Is what it was, somewhere, somehow, I don't know. The one, is the test done at the ballpark facility?
Yes.
All right. So I bought the civil service test out there. There's a window climb out there. All it is is a wooden structure built with a window cut into, I don't know, like a house that's four or six foot off the ground. I can't remember what it is. So, you know, and I was kind of looking at it sideways when they were discussing this, but I'm thinking, how in the hell can a wooden structure that's just sitting there, you can come up, jump through the window, pull yourself up through it, be law operation? It just stands there, doesn't do anything. So, you know, and their answer to that was, well, if it's not operational, then, you know, put some provision in there to, if they can't use. Okay, say they go out and use, anything I can see happening, say they go out and give a civil service test tonight before it's walking through, you can't think, blew over, shattered into, you know, eighteen pieces or whatever. Okay, that point it would be unavailable. I get it. So good. As far as the other one, yeah, I think the other ones would possibly be unavailable is the window climb. That's as if it did physically broke or fell over or was blown over or was blooded in. And the first guy who jumped on it, he blew right through the wall of some of that nature. But, I mean, it's all mechanical nature, so they got hung up on that. And I think they just put, put that in there just in the case, and something is, I don't know. I don't know about those. But that, that's how we kind of discussed it, correct?
Yeah, I understand he had concerns, but I'm certainly not minimizing their concerns. Because they're sitting there as a group, they're trying to think about it from their, from their perspective. They had that concern. I think they came up with that language they thought would give them a little bit of flexibility. But they also understood that the commissioners wanted to get it nailed down. So they were trying to, they didn't want to get this to the point where they think the language is too broad, where they wouldn't, where it would be something that you folks wouldn't be in agree with. They wanted a little bit of flexibility. Again, from a practical standpoint, I don't think it ought to be utilized.
And I also don't think there's any underlying public implications in there about anything. Because I mean, really, I mean, they, they had a length discussion over a wooden structure that doesn't move. So, I mean, I don't know, I saw it, but I was kind of looking at like, why are we talking about this?
Just the concern they had and they had, they, they probably spent decent amount of time talking about just this one, this one.
Yeah, they did.
So it's up to you guys how you want to handle it. But if you, if you're in favor of it now and we forward, if you're not, I'll take it back to them. I mean, I honestly don't, I'll do it your way.
I just had, just had a question.
Is the rest of the board ready to move forward with the ordinance that we advertised for October?
Yeah.
Okay, good deal. Thank you. That's everything for me tonight.
Thank you. Next topic is planning and engineering topic, Mr. Lightman.
There are two plans up for discussion tonight. The first one is Brookhaven Plan Phase Three and Four, which is located on Morris, Timothy and Durs Roads. Phases one and two of this plan are already underway in Penn Township. You can see on the screen how the lots are carved up, not only in, this shows phases one and two as they're located in Penn Township. And then the location of where phases three and four would be in Walthamton. The crosshatched areas are phases three and four. The lots that are actually laid out now and recorded are phases one and two. It's a pretty large plan and it's impossible to show the whole thing on the screen at one time at a scale that you can read. But you can see that there are lots opposite O'Callaghan Park on Timothy. Then continuing around on the south side of Durs. There are lots on both sides of Morris and a short cul-de-sac street that's proposed that will access six lots off of Morris. It's really a fairly simple plan in terms of infrastructure because all of the lots are on existing roads. With the exception of those six lots on the short cul-de-sac street to be named Riley. Water, sewer needs to be extended. The storm water is kind of interesting because the plan is so spread out. What they are proposing, and there's also a stream running right through the middle of the land. What they're proposing, rather than trying to build three or four detention ponds, is to have one large detention pond, which, I'm sorry, I don't have a laser, but it's kind of an odd shaped lot that's completely surrounded by lots right in the middle of that screen. An over detaining storm water there so that the lots that can't run into that because of topography would run off undetained. But ultimately, when you look at the development as a whole, it balances out to equate to the predeveloped state. There you can see the detention lot a little better in that photo, in that screen capture. The developer is requesting waivers on a handful of items. Submission of a formal environmental constraint study. Installation of sidewalks because ninety percent of the lots exceed a hundred foot frontage and exceed half an acre. Submission of a traffic impact study, which is only required once you hit five hundred trips per day. It's generally assumed the residential plan is somewhere between nine and ten trips per lot. So for thirty-three lots, you don't approach that five hundred trip, trigger point. Waiver that asphalt wedge curbs would be constructed out of base material. What RWS has found is that they get a longer lasting curb if they build it out of top coat. But that allows you to roll the base asphalt underneath that and get a stronger base. Four inch underdrain on the high side of the roads only. And some lots will have one or more non-radio lot lines, which means that the lot line is not perpendicular to the edge of the road. Planning Commission recommended approval of this plan with four conditions. That being that Pendott would approve the proposed driveways in intersection with Riley Way. Interesting catch twenty-two, Pendott won't permit more than one driveway from a piece of property. Right now it's one piece of property, but they can't get approval for multiple driveways until it's subdivided. We won't let it be subdivided until we know there's driveways to be permitted. So they've got to make one step first, which is do the subdivision. But they're proposing to put a note on the plan that says that the driveway won't be approved until Pendott says they are. Resolution of a handful of remaining engineering comments, a developers agreement, and fee and lieu funds would be dedicated to O'Callaghan Park. Questions? Okay, the next plan is fairly simple. It's a one parcel into two lot subdivision. This is located on South Hampton Drive, which is the street that goes into Chestnut Hills. This is actually the remainder of the McCannon property, which was sold to Hep Development to create the Chestnut Hills plan. Mr. McCannon passed away last year. Adam and Carly Painter purchased his home, which has frontage on McCannon Road. They have enough land there that they would like to split that off and create a second lot so that a second home could be built. There's a close up that shows it a little better. The only real condition that needs to be satisfied here is that DEP would have to approve one EDU sewer job planning for that additional lot. Forgot to mention also that with Brookhaven, the Conservation District and DEP have already issued their approvals. It was all done upfront, so it was nice to have the piece in Penn Township behind us because a lot of the administrative approvals were already taken care of. But Planning Commission recommends approval of this with that contingency of DEP approving the sewer tap.
That is it?
That is it.
Thank you very much. Next item, further board comments. Yeah? What do you want to work?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. This question, all favors die.
Aye.
Pose, I have, we will have an executive session act after the meeting. Being adjourned, please. All right.
Come on, give me your card.
Very good. They do store and move to a different storefront. I have not heard that it's been, I truly don't know whether it's papers or not. No, I saw an email here yesterday, that, I think it was a store, uh, in Valley and, I don't know if I say it right, thanks for that. Well, I guess they've announced it by the end of the year.
Well, the LCP said no, but, but I, I believe the, I heard a story that they were talking about expanding inside the, so that's actually wrong.
Why would they, why would they expand it after they just didn't build out?
Yeah, okay.
At the grand game opening and all that.
Okay, so then, yeah.